We have about one minute of time for the meeting. If anybody is here to speak at the public hearing, make sure you do register. Okay. I have six o'clock. I'll go ahead and follow regular monthly meeting for the Grayson County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Smith, it's my weakness of communication.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the Constitution of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I think I have a one for your attendance tonight for the meeting. We have a scheduled public hearing at six oh five. Board members will have the opportunity to review the agenda and consent agenda prior to the meeting. And also that I would ask that we consider addition of a closed session to discuss pursuant to Code of Virginia, two point two dash three seven one one, page one, discussion for consideration of an application for county administrator specifically related to the October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty two closed session. And also, under reports, presentations, and requests, it's been requested to move Mr. Bowles's presentation to a closed session during the next month's meeting for security reasons. And I believe that would be all the amendments to be considered.
Chairman, I make my way through the agenda, the agenda with no change.
If I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, signify by the same eye, in the post, I'll sit down. And I'll state again, plus a couple people that come in later, I think I know what they're related to in the presentations, but if there is anyone that is here to speak related to the Apex Towers, I thought I'd say in public hearing, I need to register in the lobby on the sign up sheet. Hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to enjoy this beautiful day in Grayson County as I stall for six oh five. We're close.
Sing or tell a joke?
I don't want everybody to leave, I'll start singing. I sing with my wife at church, but I let her do the lead, she just allows me to be there.
Uh, yes, is there anything that, Jamie?
You're okay?
Yeah, yeah, we'll hit it in a bit here.
I'm late, we have Mr. Mayo here with Apex, we have other questions. Um, thank you all for listening to me tonight. On the, let me say it was September the twentieth, planning commission received and reviewed an application for a request for special use permit under Article four, section four dash six point two I, the Grayson County zoning ordinance to authorize and construct an operation of a communications tower and antenna on two parcels containing approximately twenty six point five acres of land located at sixteen, excuse me, sixty one five Cardinal, six fifteen Cardinal Road, Route six forty three, a further identified as tax map number fifty eight A one ninety five A and fifty eight A one ninety two. The proposed communication towers located approximately, it's on fifty eight A and one ninety two. The reason that I included both one ninety five A and one ninety two was because we have to build a road across one to get to the other. So the property's owned real farm, it's not designated in the enterprise zone, nor is it in the opportunity zone, or there's no historical structures to be located approximately in the relationship of this particular cell tower. The property owner is Garian Juth Haines of Galax. And the topography of this particular parcel is relatively sloping and rolling. As I said earlier, it is designated as real farm. One thing I do want to mention, the proposed how tower height is a hundred and ninety nine feet. It will not be lit, according to the FAA requirements, it would not have to have a light. And our ordinance does not approve of a lights unless the FAA actually requires of that. One thing that is special about this particular piece of property is it does abut to the city of Galax. I've notified the city of Galax and I received no comment as to whether or not there would be any issues with this particular cell tower in that area. I did receive one comment at the time, I did have a visit from Ms. Edwards, Priscilla Edwards, and she basically wanted to know whether or not we can ensure the erosion sediment control, the roads going in and the grading that was done would ensure that we didn't have any of those issues that would transfer to her property. And the other thing that she really wanted to know was what it was going to look like and when it would start. No opposition, just wanted to confirm that her property would be carefully protected. At that September twentieth meeting after the review, we discussed just general information as it would relate back to the ordinance setbacks, chain link fences. We discussed the color of the particular cell tower. We discussed the adjoining landowners, how would it affect them, what the actual distance was to the neighbor, the closest neighboring property. I believe there inside of your staff, my staff packet, you've got a visual representation of what that particular cell tower would look like in certain areas off of Cardinal Road, off of Petty Road, off of Fairview Road. Apex done a phenomenal job in ensuring that we knew what it was going to look like. And of course, above all, the planning commission did ask about co-location. So also in our ordinance, it does speak about co-locating for county purposes for emergency services. And we do have a policy, they do have a policy in place, that if approved, that would be allowed at no cost to the county. So with that, the planning commission did recommend to the board supervisors approval as presented in the application. And that is why we're here tonight. Does the board have any questions for me? And like I said earlier, Mr. Heel is here from Apex Towers, if we, if you have further questions for them as well.
So the special use permit, it's covering two plats.
Sure.
Right. Does that special use permit though only pertain to the seventy by seventy foot square? Or does it allow other, other things to occur within that? Activity associated with this tower to occur in both of those plats, even though it may be outside the design?
The special use would allow for that particular cell tower on that particular plat, fifty eight dash A one ninety two, in that area. Of course, it's still regulated under rural farm districts, so anything outside of that seventy by seventy square could still go on. So agricultural operations and such.
The special use permit is only specific to that?
That particular area.
That's it.
You entertain a motion to go into public hearing, which is four?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by the same eye. In the post, I'll sit down. Okay. Michael, anybody interested in speaking? Uh, I plan a motion to come out with, okay?
So moved.
First and second, all in favor, signify by the same eye. In the post, I'll sit down. Just motion. You entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special use permit for the construction of cell phone tower of Apex Tower. As presented.
Motion, the second, in discussion. Hear none, all in favor, signify by the same eye. In the post, I'll sit down. Okay. We're heading to town.
Good to be here, our second trip.
Feel free to stick around for aggressive meetings.
Moving on to reports, presentations, our requests. Next on the agenda would be Mr. Michael Clemens, Gigabeam broadband update.
He's gonna let me go first, either gentleman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Amanda Cox with Appalachian Power, it's good to see you guys in person. And thank y'all for inviting us to come give a brief update on the broadband project and all the really exciting things that we've had going on. I just want to give you an update on the AEP perspective and our construction build and answer any questions that you have. And I'll turn it over to Michael and his team, so you have some questions as connections are happening. But we are at ninety seven point forty two percent built out. So we're looking at about five more miles, we've got four miles of underground that we're, you know, we talked about this, we're going to stall a little bit. That's in the national forest piece of the build and we have to go through their public comment period and things like that. So we're waiting for their next forty five day public comment period. And that's, that's just kind of, we're going to be in a holding pattern at that point as, as we wait to hit those timelines. And I did just want to say, you know, I know you've seen our trucks, you've seen our crews everywhere, and just because the fiber is in the air, that doesn't mean there's time to connect customers. And I know that Gigabeam can talk about that in a little more detail. I'm not really technical, but we have to install splice cases and terminal points and splice back to Gigabeam and do testing on the fiber. And for each OLT, I believe that takes around six to eight weeks. And, and that's everything goes well. And sometimes things don't go well. So, so we've had some, we've had some issues with splicing and with testing and things of that on, on our side, actually, on the AEP side, as we're working on some of this sometimes. And, you know, we've had some even issues with our crews. We lost our splicing crews just because of the demand of the splicing. Now we have three though, we're back in the game and, you know, splicing where we can and making sure that Michael and his team can connect folks quickly. But I did want to talk about that because I feel like a lot of times Gigabeam kind of takes it on the chin because folks think there's the fiber, why are we not connecting? And there have been some holdups. And you got to think about this being a pilot program, the first of its kind in Virginia, the first to be approved by the SCC. And we've had a couple of growing pains, but I do think that we're in a really good position now as we start to see customer installs tick up, as we start to see drops tick up, not just on the wireless, on the fiber side, but on the wireless side as well. We have not so much on our side, but on Gigabeam's side, there have been some supply chain issues. And luckily, we've been able to leverage our relationships with our partners. There have been issues with fiber, certain lengths of fiber that we've been able to, to leverage with our contractors, our vendors so that we could get Gigabeam a better, a better time, poles, poles, there's a really big need for poles right now. And Gigabeam has run into some problems there, we've been able to supply utility poles. And then just even down to training, there's been training that his, that his team has needed. And it could have taken months to get on the schedule and we actually had a facilitator in-house that we were able to bring in so that they could be compliant with everything that they're doing as they're crossing the roads and things of that nature. So, you know, lots of different moving parts to this project. Our estimated spend on the project is about nineteen million dollars. So about nineteen million in Grayson County in, in assets. So that, that's not a small amount of money. We are dedicated to the communities that we serve, so really happy about that. And I will just say, the partnership is the most important piece. We, we started this twenty nineteen, I think, we started this partnership in twenty nineteen. And between the county and AppCo and Gigabeam, we've been working really hard. Want to make sure that the folks that live in your districts understand how hard everyone's been working on this project to make sure there's universal coverage. You guys have a great contract in place, you have a red, even a road share agreement. I've not seen any of those in any of the projects that we're working. So you definitely have the right folks, the right dedicated folks that want to move the county forward and get that universal coverage. So the big thing now is just making sure people know the service is out there and where exactly it is and just urging them to sign up if, if they want connectivity. Any questions for me?
I just got one for you, Amanda. The, the last little bit to get you to a hundred percent through the national forest, could you talk a little bit about what that connection is going to do, not only for AppCo but for Gigabeam? My understanding is it's going to connect you to, it's going to make it a redundant system, like it's going to help access another fiber to go a different way, is that, do I have that right, or is that?
Can you talk, like?
Then I'll defer to him.
Yeah, he can probably talk a little bit more in detail about what we're doing on the national forest side. But yes, redundancy is really important, making sure that we have redundant fiber for all of our connections.
Okay.
How many of the OT, only OTs have been constructed at this park?
Constructed? Yes, Michael's got that in his presentation. We've got, we've got lots of OTs and we're working on splicing and doing things of that nature. But I don't want to get too technical because you, you don't want me to get too technical. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Mike Lemmons. And I have with me here Adam Legachip, he's an operations manager, and Greg Hadrick is the project manager. Just thought I'd bring a couple guys in if you had any questions about boots on the ground type stuff.
Not bodyguards or?
More functional, Greg. To get into the questions you asked there, the last leg, that is exactly what it is. We've got a leased line from your independence going to Richmond that's feeding the, the network now to a data center we, we're at there. And eventually, when that's completed, it goes to Lithville and we connect it with the AppCo fiber there that already exists as well as the matter of Facebook fiber to get to another data center and have redundancy. And that's our whole goal for everything we're doing is have super redundancy for the region. So we have limited outages and things like that.
Are we vulnerable until that piece gets connected?
If the main line out here gets cut, yes, you would have a hard down. And we've had that happen twice since the project's been active. Once was in Blacksburg and the other was Nebraska State. But they fix it fairly quick usually, but like I said, redundancy is to prevent that. And that's out of our hands at that point, but it's other people's numbers. So you definitely want the redundancy and geographically redundant too, that's what I like. So we've got one going this way and one going north, so you've got less likely to have a failure that way. When it comes into the design and what you asked about OTs, the project's split up into seventeen OT locations. And those are cabinets, you may have seen some on the road in a few places. We've got three of them that are active, the splicing's done, they're serving customers. Most of those are in the Elk Creek area, that's where we started the project. All the cabinets on the western side of the county are installed. They're pending inspection for power, is that right?
Six through eleven, data box has actually received my application for permits, so we're working on that now.
Inspection is scheduled for tomorrow, I think.
He signed the permit?
I signed the permit this evening right before this.
Yeah, it's little early in place and that's actually one of the next OTs that will be lit. And that's any, any day actually, AppCo is finalizing testing on that line, that, that section. And we should be able to have that, that area lit in the next week or two, just waiting on them to clear it. The rest of them on the eastern side of the county, and those are scheduled to start installation, I guess.
Our team will be there next week.
Next week. Which plenty of time to get that done because they're not needed by AppCo for a few months. So we're trying to keep the cabinet installs well ahead of the construction schedule from, from AppCo. So all the splicing goes smoothly and all that kind of thing, especially now we have three crews handling the splicing. That's a big, big difference. In the first OT, we said that's our active network right now. We've got five hundred and twenty mapped addresses that can be fed from those three OTs in total. Out of that, those five hundred and twenty known addresses we have, almost eighty percent, seventy nine percent have not contacted us for service. That's the biggest problem we have right now. And we're doing, marketing director's not here, but we're doing marketing campaigns to try to get these locations to sign up. Different things from mailings to going to the door, knocking on it, like leaving door hangers at front of home, various things like that to try to get people to sign up for service to know they can get service there. That, that area is lit and ready.
What were the numbers again?
Seventy nine percent is not, that's, the total is around four hundred.
So you got twenty percent that have contacted you?
Right. Basically, we've got, out of that, fifty eight of them, we've got them living on, on the air, they're, they were served. We still have ten drops scheduled to be installed. Some of those were long drops, that was some of the supply chain issues she was talking about. We finally got our long drops two weeks ago, right?
We've got one more shipment coming in Tuesday.
The two thousand footers. We, fifteen hundred footers and twenty five hundred footers came in about two weeks ago. The two thousand peak are on truck headed our way right now. So we're very happy to get those.
Got to say something. So you've got, sorry to interrupt, but so you're trying to recruit more customers?
Yes.
To sign up and you're knocking on doors and things like, because I've been getting tons of calls from people that are emailed, can't get somebody to answer the phone, can't get, the map's not updated. I mean, the customer service part of that seems to be lacking from what I'm hearing from our people.
The maps are, are showing the lit OT areas on our website today.
So they're updated?
OTs one, two, and three, that's what's active. That's, that's exactly what's on there. And somebody's answering the phone, there's somebody live answering the phone six days a week. So that's, that shouldn't be a problem there. If you sign up for service online, even if you're not in the active areas, you're on our database. And we have four hundred and sixty seven people have signed up, but they're not in OTs one, two, and three. They're in other parts of the county that we can't serve yet. But we have all those listed, broken out by OTs, know where they're at. And as soon as the terminal's installed by AppCo, we do the drops. And then once it's lit, we can finalize the install. Actually, already in OTs four, five, and twelve, we've got twenty six drops already installed for people that have requested service. We just can't get them on yet until that's a lit section.
So what I'm hearing is that you feel like your customer service is adequate?
I mean, it's not perfect because we're hiring more CSRs, we're short on CSRs right now. So we're actively hiring for that.
Customer service, right? Is that a CSR?
Yes. We're, we're, we need more CSRs now, we need more installers, especially in the county. Anybody in the county looking for a job? We're hiring right away because that's a permanent job, those are ones that, that we want to keep here. They will maintain the system after construction is done. We've, we've struggled finding local help so far. So any, if you know anybody looking for, for work, we're hiring.
Jobs at gigabeam.net, send to me.
Yep. We've had great success in hiring lately. We've had, I don't know the total counts, if you can get into that.
I think I'm at twenty eight total.
Yeah. We have a couple of local community colleges that have started line marker certifications. And it fast tracks them, within a few months, they have their certs and ready to go to work. And we've gotten some great thrusters from that. Actually, it's, it's really been a lifesaver because I've looked for months to find that resource and it just opened up to us. Because they kind of go about twice a year, I guess, they have staff ready for us. And actually, some of the crew we have, they're out, they're, they're staying in Grayson weekly. We have, oh, at least five or sixteen here, Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday, if we work them over. They work ten to twelve hour days. And most of those fellows are from West Virginia, so they travel down here, stay here the whole week doing drops. And then go back home over the weekend and then they come back and do it again. And currently, we're having about, they work between nine and fifteen employees in the county every day. That includes them, but also our support staff coming in doing the backend work for OT jobs, installations, things like that. So all of that is ramped up dramatically here in the past few weeks.
So is it safe to say that that ramp up, you know, it might have been a little bit of a lag in maybe what Mr. Anderson's talking about, that you ramped up your staff?
Exactly, yeah, several of these employees we just brought on in the past six, eight weeks.
So we're bridging that gap, trying to make sure that the folks are getting heard and getting calls back and things like that. And he's definitely done a huge hiring campaign lately, so that could have been, you know, prior, they were stretched thin a little bit. Sorry.
If, if we could talk a little bit about the take rate, it's concerning. You know, I think when we started this planning, we estimated roughly sixty four percent, sixty five percent of that population in a particular area would take the service in precision. Twenty percent or maybe less than that, ten percent. So what I'm wondering is, yeah, you're in, you're in Elk Creek, Combers Rock, Carsonville kind of area right now. And, but there's other areas that you're going to be in, you know? And so is it possible, so is it possible to articulate, A, we're going to be in Flat Ridge, for example, or Troutville in January, February, just throwing it out there. So we can use that timeline to then talk to the folks that live in that area and say, hey, get signed up, they're coming to your area between these two months. It seems to me that that would help us help you get the message out. Is there, is that sort of phased approach and timeline available?
Yes, we've actually supplied Gigabeam chart a few weeks ago, I don't know if it all has that. We've actually supplied, like, in charge a few weeks ago, I don't know if it all has that. The committee has it? Okay, I've got it here, I didn't do a presentation for it. But we have planned out, based on the timetables that AppCo's gave us, as to when OLTs will be finished, to hand it to us, to know when we're planning those installations in each OLT section. So we have all those laid out for our entire project.
So we could, we could work with our GIS folks or a project manager for the county to work and publish a more, you know, kind of easier to understand, if I can say that. That Gant's, I'm not too honest.
It's a big project, so there's a lot of different things that are going on.
So I've got it down for me. So if we make a simpler chart that says, this is where they're gonna be in these geographical areas, and then put that out there, would that make sense? Would that help?
Targeted, yes. Yeah, targeted that. We're totally open to that. And actually, I was planning on doing that next, on even on the website.
Right.
Of course, we're drawn to all of that. Absolutely, but people can sign up anytime. Because like I said, we've got four hundred some already signed up. I don't care where you live in the county, you can sign up. If you want service, sign up, so we know, and that helps us plan our drop installs and makes that more efficient, quicker.
Yeah, I think as well, I agree, sign up. The concern, I guess, or the possibility is that people are not knowing when and if it's gonna come, are hesitant to sign up because, you know, they don't know. And if we can work on that timeline and make it a simple sort of chart to get out there to help you publicize, I think that would help drive, hopefully help drive that take rate.
Anything to help get people to sign up, we're more than wanting that to happen. Like I said, we're trying to do everything we can to make it happen too. But Michelle's been, that's the marketing director, she's been going to every festival. We haven't done booths and things at the festival yet, but she's gone and kind of talking one on one with people and things like that. Like I said, we're trying to get out, community-wise as much as we can. If you have any suggestions, you know, we're open to it, of course, to talk to anybody and everybody about getting them up. The project's scheduled to complete by midsummer, or May to June. That's, you've got that on your Gant's chart. So basically, every OLT should be lit by then.
So make sure, make sure it will clear, precise terms to use precisely. When you say complete, May, June, and twenty twenty-three?
That's when AppCo is supposed to turn over the last OLT section to us as being actively.
Their portion is complete because that doesn't necessarily translate to you?
We're gonna have to do installs after that, of course. But we'll be doing drops as they do it, you know? When they go into an OLT section, you know, like I said, they have to do all this splicing. The terminal cases, the drop cables that go to the house have to be installed, all that. Once that terminal case is installed, we can do the drop. We might not be able to turn it on yet till the whole thing is lit, but we can do the drop and get that part out of the way and that speeds up the install process. So it kind of goes hand in hand. So a lot of that stuff will be done, like that last OLT, it's seventeen. It starts in March and finishes in May. That's AppCo's predicted timeline. Halfway through that, sometime in April or so, a lot of those terminals will be in the air and we can start doing drops and get those out of the way. But we need people to tell us they want the service, to know those drops need to be installed. So that's, that's kind of what we're trying to encourage. It just makes us more efficient. And part of what we're doing to encourage that too is during this construction process, standard install is all installed when things are laid. It's a free install, but you gotta do it now. Yeah, if it's a buried install, we'll have another little fee to it because that's way more expensive for us to do. But if it's a basic, standard install, they sign up and do it, so we can do it efficiently, we're giving them a free installation.
Could you hit the free installation thing again?
Yeah, yeah.
Going back to the two hundred and sixty mailings, we pulled them directly off of our map. So every house got a mailing.
And how many responsibilities did we have?
Ten.
Fewer than tens, wasn't it?
Fewer than ten, we had, off of direct money straight to your house. That's, I mean, that's off the fiber.
That's somewhat typical for a mailing. A lot of times, you have to hit a mailing at least three, four times for somebody to get attention to it. It's like everything in marketing, usually you gotta get in your ear three times at least. Because a lot of times, you'll get something in the mail, we've all done it. It looks like.
That's it.
If you're at the post office, you don't even look at it, you throw it in the trash in the lawn. So you gotta hit them a few times to get awareness of it, you know? So I expected that that number to be somewhat the first round. But that on top of a doorknob and a door hanger, what have you, you know, it's getting there. But we definitely need to do more of that, no question. But like I said, for installs, you know, if somebody signs up while we're doing construction, it was already a reduced install anyway because it cost several hundred dollars to do a fiber installation. We were going for ninety-nine bucks to start with. We're waving them to ninety-nine dollars, trying to encourage people to sign up, so it's free. You can't beat that deal.
I'm just, I'm trying to get these drops done in an area while my crew is already in the area. I don't want to be running from White House back to Elk Creek, so that's what I'm trying to do.
The efficiency we get there makes up for the ninety-nine dollars, basically.
Based on number of customers and your design, your, based on the drops that you have available, and just so everybody knows, the drop is from the middle mile that AppCo builds to the home.
Yes.
Okay. You're comfortable with the quantity you have to service those particular areas at this particular time?
The quantity of drops?
The quantity of drops that you have will service OLTs one, two, and three?
Yes.
At this point. Two, because we'll have everything we need from twenty-five hundred foot down.
But they're gonna be coming in, you know, a few at a time from now on.
Yeah, we have fifteen hundred drops are in stock right now. So we've got plenty of drops. More are scheduled. Like I said, the drop cables are probably the longest timeline to get it, any hardware right now. We have all the electronics for the county. I ordered that a long time ago and it's been coming in chunks all along. So all the OLTs are here, the line of terminals that go to the cabinets, all that stuff is here. So we're not waiting on anything to happen.
If I could ask a question of the, we know that eighty percent have signed up, so twenty percent I have. Is that twenty percent, how many are still pending and how long will it take to get those hooked up?
There is, like I said, fifty-eight are installed. We've got seven that are waiting on a fiber installation of that last five percent that's going to Lithville. The very bottom of the mountain going out, where they're waiting on, there's seven customers there that we can't hook up yet because of fiber just literally in there yet. And that's just because of that permitting issue. We have, I don't know if I'm here. We've got, right away, we've got, I'm a distance mall. Right now, we have twelve that have right-of-way issues, and that has to do with tree density. The right-of-way is overgrown, so we're having to have those cleared. And he's working on that right now to get a contractor in to clear some trees and provide more of that. We actually have seen more than that than we anticipated. And some landowners are actually, because they want service, are clearing that for us. You know, there's some trees out that have overgrown and need to go right of way and doing it so we can go ahead and hook them up. But we've got to take care of that too. So there's a few that are waiting on that. Then we've got thirteen undergrounds that are getting ready to go, are waiting on some long drops to do those. We've got the equipment to do underground installations and those, I don't know if they'll start those next week.
We've got sixteen that are waiting, scheduling the customer drops done?
We've got nine scheduled to be installed. The drops are done, they'll be installed by next week. Once the drop's done, then we call the customer and schedule what day they want us to come to their house to put it in. Now they're on schedule. Right now, the other sixteen are, we're waiting to hear from them to say, I want it on Tuesday or Wednesday, whenever they're home.
So the process, somebody contacts you whichever way, say, I want service. When you get there, you then go and put the drop in based on?
Yes, I do it that way because the customer doesn't have to be home.
Correct.
So I do that part when you get the drop.
So for the customer, there's really two phases. You gotta sign up, that gets the drop to your house, but then you gotta schedule an install update, you want. Because they have to run, they have to go home.
That's when they have to be home.
Right.
And that's kind of challenging down here, something we're not used to because there are a lot of vacation homes here where people aren't here all the time. So the scheduling sometimes takes a little longer than I expect. But it's, you know, it's happened. We're doing it their convenience, you know, they may be up once a month or something, they're all kind of.
But those are different crews that are.
Yes, so the drop crews are different than the installers. We split that up so that we could try to stay ahead of the game and get more efficient. And normally, I would say, you know, when you're not in such a rush to get them done, the same group could do both. But as of right now, I'm trying to keep it separated so that every crew doesn't have to wait on a customer to be home, so they can get some of it done.
And we're also definitely in our bucket trucks and things like that to drops and not having a bucket aisle going up inside install. I've been for the bucket, who's doing the next drop.
Keep the bucket moving.
But overall, I know one thing that's mulling around whenever, is talking about how busy we are in other projects, even AppCo and other areas. For some of them, I want you to know, this is the only fiber project we have in construction. It's the only place we're working right now. We have other projects coming in other counties, but they're in engineering and planning right now. They're nowhere near to construction. Plan Montgomery is, of course, coming. They haven't even got their SCC approval yet, hopefully it will be in November. So we're focused on Grayson for construction, this is all we're doing. And like I said, we're ramping up everything to get that accomplished, that's a big ramp. I've heard a lot of confusion about that. And we also invested, so far, I've invested over four hundred thousand dollars into this project on every half, between planning, engineering, labor, equipment, trucks, all that kind of stuff. And we're spending fifteen to twenty thousand a week doing this with staff and supplies and fuel and so on and so forth. So we're well invested in this project and we want it to be very successful. So, you know, we're in this, we're your partner, we want this to happen.
So how, how many months are made of the initial fiber contract that you have with the county?
That contract's, I don't know the exact date, I'd have to go back and look, it's been a while since I've even looked at it, but. Two twenty-four? I know it's probably a couple of years, something like that.
So, if I could, there's, you know, when we started this whole thing, there's gonna be wireless and a little bit of fiber and then AppCo showed up. But there's still, I mean, we're thankful that you showed up, don't get me wrong. The, and we're glad you're still here. The, but there's, there's still a wireless or a fixed base wireless component. And I think, kind of to supervise your Anderson's question, a lot of times, folks will call and the answer is, well, you're not in the fiber belt, so you're not eligible for service. But, you know, when we did this whole thing, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the goal was universal broadband coverage, right? So if you don't get fiber, we got a wireless solution for you, right? That's, that's the expectation. Is that still your plan?
I was gonna talk about that next, we're getting into wireless the next part. It's broken into three projects, three funding sources, basically. Two tobacco funds and body, body is a hybrid of fiber and wireless. And actually, the second tobacco is a hybrid as well, that's White Top area.
And those are everybody bodies for junior telecommunications.
That's right. And the, two of those grant, well, I think both of them were funded here before, we were even partners. I can't remember if the second one was or not, I know the first one was.
The first one was.
Yeah, the second one, I think we were involved in that. But it needs to be spent, and of course, we're pushing it actively. And that was the first wireless site we did, Point Lookout. We built a licensed link there, put equipment on the tower and lit it. As soon as we had the fiber done by AppCo, we turned that up. Now we're working in that area to finalize it. We want that area and that segment to be finished by December. And the hardest part of doing wireless is site acquisition. You can see in our body application, the plan for wireless, the fiber and the wireless is in the maps there. We have sites picked out that we're looking for the tower here and a pole there and things like that. That's all planned, and that's it. We don't have signed agreements to do a grant application, so we're predicting that. What we have to do when we go into construction is get those sites. And if one or two landowners don't agree with you, you have to redesign. And you typically redesign the project several times by the time it's finished because you're having to adjust for landowners. So that's, that's an obstacle, that's the hardest part of doing the wireless part of it. And we've had, in the phase one area, it's been mixed, but actually, we've made a lot of strides in that in the past few weeks. And that's what he's been working on, I probably will let him talk about it. John's actually involved in some of that as well, but we'll let you talk about that now.
John, as you know, it's been a struggle, because it's like you said the other day, topography down here is the first boat. It is tough to find high elevation where people let you access. And I've found six places, four of them is pretty much, three of them said, no, three of them's good and you're one of them right now, so, but we've got it done. Looking forward to working with you, hopefully. But it is a real struggle, but we have two good tower sites picked out. We're gonna run the numbers first thing in the morning, get our propagation labs. We'll run that again first thing in the morning. I hope to be talking to you Monday morning.
But on the wireless side, you know, how are we, you know, the approach is different for wireless than it is for fiber. So you're, you're enabling the wireless to do the fiber, but could you?
Yeah, the whole wireless network is fed by the tower. And so we can't turn up certain sections of wireless until the fiber's done. So anything near OLTs one, two, and three, we can do now. Of course, we kind of intentionally did one, two, and three to help support the first tobacco area because it joins it or whatever, and that's what we're after right now. That's lit, we can build wireless all above it and they can get service. The installation process is much simpler for the customer on the wireless because we don't have drop cables to install, it's just an end stop. So it's one trip to the house, you put in the radio and hook them on. The most time-consuming part, like you said, is site acquisitions. Construction sites doesn't take that long. Get the equipment on there, turned it up, you're selling service, so it goes fairly quick.
But back to the earlier question, if somebody calls and your CSR says, you know, you're not eligible because you're not the fiber, and the answer should be, you're gonna be wireless, so how, what's the?
We've discussed that, because some of that was a misunderstanding with the CSR, they had worded wrong. And I missed it myself because I didn't realize they were saying that. But yeah, they should have said that you can't get fiber right now, but we're building wireless to get to you. And that's exactly what we're doing.
So the answer though, is it gonna be, could you discuss a little bit about powder mail? You know, we had the folks in here a few weeks ago, a couple of months ago, actually, talking about the challenges that they have. One lady has a medical issue that you all have been working to solve. Is that, could you describe what we're doing there? And then also, is that the model for the rest of the county that's outside the fiber belt? Is something of that?
Similar to that, yes. So like I said, some of it is some small towers. We're talking Road forty about G, sort of foot and a half wide, this is micro towers. It's not like this gentleman's one ninety-nine, it's a, a cell tower's much bigger. These towers are eight to ten grand to buy, another eight to ten grand to install. You know, they're lightweight towers, but we get more hype with that. And then like what we did for that situation is the utility pole. We will install like a forty-five foot utility pole and it will supply service around its area through a valley or whatever. And we do those because it's low cost and you're typically only hitting eight to ten customers, something like that. So you don't want to put a big tower like he does, put ten customers, it wouldn't make sense. But a micro site with a pole, yeah, it works really well. And we can solar power that if power's not in the area. If it does have power. Uh, but that site is actually.
We're close.
It's, it's actually going to Ohio.
So both, both ends of that link to get, um, the wireless site on Powder Mill Road, Texas Mike Fitz property. Um, those, both of those structures are now standing. They're waiting on us to get the electricity live. So then, you know, our electronics in the cabinet, radios are mounted on the pole, they're ready to go as soon as we get. As soon as we get, you know, electricity going in the habit from both ends of that link, we're gonna be rock out. So, you know, it's, it's pretty much good.
Sam, I'm, uh, I have a resident lives on Leafwood, which parallels, uh, Spring Valley Road. I believe y'all have, are doing connections over that plane now?
We have done some on Spring Valley, I think, is that OLT four? So we have done a lot of drops in that area, but the fiber's not lit.
But at five, we've done eighteen drops in.
But it's not, there, there's not any service on those yet. So we haven't built any wireless in that area yet because we didn't have the internet to be.
But, but once you, is that gonna be a resolution to, he, he, he's been told that he will be connected, you know, with his first friend. Is, is that gonna be a resolution?
That's, that's what I'm trying to do for the people that are not in the fiber path is, is we're going to branch out off of that path with wireless and try to fill in those gaps. Yes, that's exactly.
Let's get one other thing. So you hit on the budget. You got funding for the three phases that we have, right? As you know, uh, the funding was obtained prior to the pandemic and prior to inflation and all the other stuff. And so our, our concern is we ain't got enough money, you know, based on what we got versus what it's costing you to. You know, I think your estimate for fiber install was like twelve or thirteen hundred dollars back then in the before times. The, uh, what is it now? And then, because what we, I think what we need to work together, as we talked about yesterday, is a budget per, per funding source. So we can, we can understand where our challenges are.
And, and of course, of course, like with body, that budget's set in stone. You can't change it. It's, it is what it is. And if we go over budget, it's on us to cover the, the difference and, and we intend to. So there's, yeah, we've got more costs now than we've ever had. You know, everything has gotten more expensive, dramatically more expensive.
So you're saying in body, I think Tom proved them wrong, it's like seventeen hundred cus- fiber customers in the body here. You're, you're gonna connect those seventeen hundred with the funding we have available?
Yeah, we have to. We signed a contract to do it. Uh, so we have no choice in that matter. The tobacco was not as definitive. So it's, it's a little bit different there. Uh, and it's fifty fifty match. The phase one's a hundred fifty grand, uh, grant matched with a hundred fifty, that's three hundred thousand dollar project. We're gonna come close to that one. Uh, and like I said, with all of this, some of this stuff, but pre-bought, um, you know, the wireless equipment already have. We bought it a long time ago, haven't asked for reimbursement on it yet, but we bought it, it's there. So, so that one, we're in fairly good shape. Towers, uh, have not went up that much yet. Uh, our labor costs have went up, fuel costs went up, all that kind of stuff. That's just things we're, like, like I talked about, we've got over four hundred thousand already, uh, in this. The other phase is three hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, in tobacco funds for the White Top area. And like I said, that's a, a, a blend. Unfortunately, the electronics we bought, uh, kind of pre-inflationary. So that, that's the numbers we had. But other stuff, when it comes to construction, is gonna be more expensive. Um, so that, that area probably worries me more than, than anywhere when it comes to, uh, meeting budgets. Uh, but we're gonna make it happen no matter how we can do it. Now, there is other options for any areas that aren't in a grant sourced area. You know, we've got some parts of the county that, that weren't in funded areas and they're unserved. We had to bike off because of the Comcast challenge and all that kind of thing. And the state does have the line extension program now. And that's some more funds we can go after to, we've got fiber going down in that area from AFCO that we can't use because it's in a Comcast area, but we can come off of it. And build a, a lateral, uh, a fiber down and hit twenty customers, whatever it may be, and the state will pay for it. So that's great. And that'll make those doable. Uh, so we definitely have that as an avenue for more funding immediately. You can request that just about any time. It's an ongoing program.
Yeah, good. From a planning standpoint, a budgetary standpoint, we need to be, the committee needs to be looking down the road about what areas are we going to? We're, you know, we're gonna build this out.
Yes.
Seventy, sixty-five percent should be on fiber. But ultimately, we want future proof the county. And so that's the budgeting piece, so we can.
Oh, I agree. There's several places I'll take for, for lateral extensions to fiber down the road. Wireless now and with the house density, I'm definitely gonna take in the fiber in the future, even if it's on a problem.
Is the, uh, the cost to, to go ahead and get wireless something going, is it just as expensive as the, as the fiber?
It's not, well, no. Uh, I mean, fiber is definitely more expensive to build and construct. Uh, it's always been that way, a lot more capital cost upfront. So no, it, uh, it's not as much per passing as fiber is.
Is it anywhere close to as effective as fiber?
Actually, with the new technology that's rolling out now and finally more spectrum, that was the biggest issue. Uh, the FCC is issuing like another eight hundred megahertz of spectrum up into the six gig range. We can do gig level wireless now. And that equipment is just now hitting the market. What we deploy today, uh, we can do two hundred to five hundred meg on, on fixed wireless. Uh, but this new stuff with the extra spectrum and the new technology, it's, I've seen gig and a half, uh, wireless, which is, I mean, it's a lot of speed. Uh, so it's, it's fiber like speeds. But you gotta feed it with, with high speed to do that. And that's the beauty of, of this middle mile from AFCO. Uh, cause you need that fiber close to that fixed wireless to make it fast. Uh, so if I'm a mile away from the site and I wanna build a wireless site and it's a mile or two away, I can make it, I can feed it with ten gigs of broadband and, and get service out to customers versus if it's ten miles away, you might do a gig to it. So this fiber network feeding the fixed wireless is crucial to make it fast.
On the, the west end of the county, you said there's. Uh, the, the box is the cabinets.
OLT.
They're installed on the west end.
They're all in White Top. That is actually OLT nine at White Top. And we have it on the ground, applied for power. That's, once we get electricity there, we finish, we build that.
So the fibers there, you're just waiting on electricity for the cabinet?
Once I get electrical service in the cabinet, part of as we're building those cabinets, we run our fiber big tail from that cabinet up to the main truck line. And as the spotters come through, AEP contractors come through, they tie our line into that main line, right? To make it live. So I'm gonna head and build these cabinets trying to get ahead of AEP. So that they're not waiting on me when it's time to squash it. Come on, I'm in place. So that's why I'm gonna head and get it that way. Um, I think they're probably in, I don't, I don't know the town. It's OLT eleven area is probably where they're gonna be next. Is that? Headed toward Fall Day, yeah.
Yeah, OLT eleven starts in October. It's supposed to finish by December.
They were working on twelve, they're headed towards eleven. I've, I've kind of built west to try to stay ahead of them, yes.
But as soon as those cabinets are turned on, you can deploy wireless immediately?
Yes, I can build wireless on top of it, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, you've answered most of my questions, OLT. Is there a cap on the OLT, how many customers can I have going on?
Not really a cap because we can put as much electrical density in it there as we want. An OLT typically has four to eight ports in it and each port feeds thirty-two customers. So in our design, one OLT cabinet is usually anywhere from two to four hundred customers. It, it varies a little bit depending on geography. But, uh, uh, we did a distributed, uh, design. Uh, and that mainly reason why we did that is releasing fiber from AFCO. Uh, if we owned the fiber, we would probably bought all the OLTs back into one location. I'm gonna fed them all, you know, centralized splits, what it's called. But during a distributed, we have less strands of fiber not to make it work. So it brings our, our costs down.
Biggest question I've got the whole time this is going on is I've got CenturyLink and it ain't worth crap. Can I get gig things? And you got the Comcast thing going on too. So could you explain a little bit about that?
So. Anywhere at CenturyLink, if you have CenturyLink service, you're eligible to get our service. That's part of the projects. Now, there's some, some areas that are unserved that aren't in grant funded areas yet. Um, and, and we'll, we'll try to, I think that's actually on the county's website, isn't it? Uh, that map's already on there. Comcast, if you have Comcast, we cannot offer you service to a grant funded project, uh, because it's served. And so public funds can't go toward that. Down the road, if we want to compete with them and expand in there, we can. But that's on our dime. You know, there can't be any public funds involved with that. And we'll address those areas based on demand. You know, if we, if we come into independence here, it's sort of like Comcast, of course. And half the people hate Comcast and they want service. But of course, we're gonna look at, they do wanna build there. So we'll have to take that by market and look at it. But right now, anything publicly funded cannot go to where Comcast currently in a service.
Yeah, so we were your first, I guess, your pilot program, as you mentioned. Are we gonna be the first to get connected of your projects? It sounded like we, we may be based on what?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
And the follow-up to that is we, in our agreement, we have a revenue share agreement. Is that, cause I know this was, this agreement's a few years back and prices have changed, you know, all that. Are you, are you, if you can say, is, is that other counties doing that as well?
This is the only county I've ever done that with. That's something that's normally, actually has never even brought up in other projects. So I say this is the only revenue sharing, uh, agreement that we made. And I really did that, like I said, we, we wanna be partners. We want this to be successful because we're local. Uh, you know, I want everybody to get internet in all Southwest Virginia. And the way I saw it, I'm gonna invest that money either way. If you didn't want revenue share, I plan on putting that money to get the rest of the unserved areas that we couldn't get into a grant discovered anyway. So this way, we're still partners and we're still making that happen in, in places that we don't have solved yet. And so we've got that funding pool building up to, to do that.
Okay. And just something for clarification, kind of backtracking a little bit. You said if someone has, um, Comcast, they're considered served.
Correct.
But if they have CenturyLink, you could.
They're considered unserved based on speed.
Okay. Cause I, like, I have Comcast. My neighbor has CenturyLink, so they could get you guys back.
Uh, if, if Comcast is available to them.
That's what, that's, that's the availability.
Yeah. If you're on the same street and the Comcast cables going through this, yeah. If it's there and it, they, it's available for them to take, you know, they can get service, okay.
They, they can't get service grant, you can't.
Grant service, right.
Funded service.
That's correct.
You could, you could still go say, hey, I want you to hook me up and you could hook them up. It just.
I can't, I can't build them into this project. And we're not even gonna attempt that because I don't want the confusion of the realities of it.
That would contest it.
After the projects are completed, the grand projects are constructed and everything is done, the money spent, then we'll look at those areas.
Is Comcast the only competition? Is that, that the only one that we have?
Only one that's considered broadband in, in Grayson, yes. Uh, CenturyLink's your other ISP. But like I said, they were deemed to not broadband by state definition.
I think you've pretty well answered the question that I was gonna have, but, uh, between, um, wireless and fiber, uh, the original plan, the reason that they're in the, uh, tobacco creation route. There's potential customer bases of about three, three thousand people. Was that what?
Yeah, based on the summary, that, that, yeah, that's right.
Okay, and I know you said on those, those three OLTs, I'm gonna do a math, that, uh, there's probably fifty-eight customers. How many right now total do you think customers you've actually put online or picked up right now?
Uh, we've got seventeen that have signed up in our live on wireless right now. And I might be standing right now, you know, for someone.
She's got them scheduled, I can.
Yeah, um, I didn't pull that and I didn't go into the schedule.
I think the numbers are a little bit higher today than what, when you.
They probably are when I did this.
They're going up every day. We're, we're doing installs every day, so it's been climbing since he pulled this data. It's a few higher everywhere.
Couple hundred customers or, I mean, have you exceeded that or?
Uh, we're probably, no, no, he's probably right around a hundred. Somewhere in that area would be my guess at this point. Folks say, yeah, we're trying to get, uh, well, just like I said, we're getting some, but. Anybody, anybody in the game that wants service, sign up. I don't care where you live, we'll get you in the database and bond up and.
I've even got a folder for not in the fiber path over here in areas. I'm, I'm keeping track of all of that. So that when I get to an area, I pull that data and I've got all your contact information. That's, that's what I'm after. Is I've got so many people that I don't have their contact information, I can't tell on area. We're live here now unless you've called me or re-dubbed me or some, you know, some, some.
And we're actually also revamping our backend management system, uh, going into something that's more suitable to what we're doing today. Kind of how it's growing, the one we were using before. Uh, it goes live in November. Uh, we've been working on it for months now. It's GIS based, so that, that the beauty of that is, is all the, the containers and designs we've done drops right into that. And it integrates out to our signup pages that you'll see on the website that we do. It already has mapped out every address. And clearly they got the maximum organization, every specific address. So it's more accurate. All of that is, is gonna be lit here in just a few weeks. And it's gonna make us more efficient in the background too. So you'll see that here in November.
You know, you were talking about, uh, public events. I think Saturday, there was a festival here in the town in the pants. We want to put a pizza up on.
She probably already knows about it.
She probably does, yeah. She should prefer to go about hunting the damn, but, uh, oh, definitely, you know. Get her involved in that.
Fall foliage festival, we'll put in a plug for them.
There you go.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, I will thank you.
Next item on the, uh, agenda would be, uh, old business. It's Mary Thomas, Director of the Wiff Grayson Regional Library Fund Request.
I'm here for, um, the Freez public library. We're looking to put in a split, um, ductless unit into that library space. I believe you all received the quotes. Uh, I don't know if you all have some questions, they're not exactly apples to apples. And the quotes. This sheet metal one was for two units to be put in that building. That's what that quote is for. Um, and they gave an additional quote for putting in the, um, I don't know what you call them. It's when you put the UVA in, it purifies the air, um, to get down the allergens, like a filter. It's, it's maintenance to less. So that's slightly different on the end. When I called them and they had two locations in the library, they can put those two units in and still have one outside unit. Um, so that's kind of the price, that's kind of what you're reading on that one. The, um, E and L quote, uh, is, he went the route of doing a big manajama thing where it is like a humongous power in one unit. So that's kind of the cost differential. Um, and he gave all the specs for that. So hopefully that answers any of your questions on, um, that type of, um, unit that they were planning on putting in. And Virginia, Carolina and heating and cooling, they've already put in a couple of units in that location. Um, and they're putting in, he is doing a one unit that had. And they're putting in, he is doing a one unit that has a lot of power to help primarily for cooling. That's why they're needing the power, because the windows on the side of the Freeze Public Library are southern facing. Which means sunlight comes in all day long, which is great in the winter and not so great in the summer. That's what heats up that building very quickly in the summertime. And so what I'm asking is, get a ductless heat pack system for that library.
Kind of on this issue with the library there in Freeze. Uh, I know the last one, maybe before, one of those other times, that was first September. You know, had deferred it to myself and the group that meets from the town Freeze. Each month, the fourth, the fourth week of the month, we have a regular meeting. We talked with the mayor and found out that they do provide a lot of utility. They provide the utilities and support to the library. So providing the space for it. And they also took through some insurance damages and done some remodeling work on.
They give us a lot of in-kind services. And when they had the flood, a lot of their money reconstructed the library space. The library also had insurance money that took care of the library end of the business, the books, the shelving. The physical stuff inside of it. But yeah, the library, the town of Freeze did a lot of in-kind services. They pay for the electrical, the water, they take care of maintenance and cleaning services in the building that are used by people coming into the library. And they have, they give us the space for no rent. So we have it free and clear, all we're doing is library services in there. We pay for internet and phone.
If the town's saying, they're, they're doing, this is, the library's problem solved, is that, but they have the towns.
Well, they would like to see, you know, if we could help. Since they do provide, you know, the utilities and the space for the library. I think the, the library is definitely a big asset to the town Freeze. And, uh, just on my behalf, I'd like to petition or beg for my district for a little help, uh, for a very worthwhile facility.
Mayor, is there a preference from what you understand of these bids? Obviously, there's a difference in price. But is there a preference, is one you look at, go, this one's gonna really solve the problem. This other one's really, it's just gonna be the bare minimums? Or is, you think any of these?
I think any one of these would fulfill our requirements. I've talked to the vendors and, you know, brought up the fact that we, during the summer, we have a lot of BTOs. I'm learning a lot of lingo that I never learned before. That, you know, just a person does six hundred BTUs of heat, which is great in the winter, the light on the windows. But in the summer, in that small confined space, that becomes the cooling issue. More power is better, but I also know that if you overpower a space with air conditioning, then it slices to work. So there's a balance between too little, too much, and just right. And that is something for someone who knows more about HVACs. But what I'm hearing from these vendors is that their units will cover the needs of the library. With sheet metal made its case for why two was better than one, in that one will cycle while the other rests. And if you need both units, if it's really hot, both units can cycle at the same time. Whereas if you only have one unit, you only have one unit. All maintenance seems to be very easy peasy, very low maintenance on that end. So I'm not sure I'm asking your question. I'm, I'm learning this stuff as I'm going.
Uh, I think what you answered was that the two, the two system seem potentially might have a better ability to support on a surge capacity than a single system. I think that's.
As I'm understanding it.
Right. The logic is there.
Yeah. That was their talking point, so.
I guess the question I have is cheers to, to staff on, you know, so this is an out budget cycle request that exceeds their budget, I guess is why you're asking.
Yes.
Right? And it doesn't meet the CIP threshold that we had established. Do we have a ability to fund this? Or is this a, what's your, what's the staff, you know, this guy, Arden, I have taken a look at his.
You're a professional, I make beer most times.
I recommend this council.
So Mr. Smith, where would you pull this from? The line in the process, whether.
Whatever the helpful sources, uh, community development fund. Because it's more important now, we're looking for that, or we could possibly consider it.
So it's, it's your recommendation that we authorize you to buy the system and you all determine which system you want. I mean, that even, I don't know that I need, I don't know enough about even one of these systems other than the price. I, I, I think I would advise Ms. Thomas to get our maintenance department involved, Kenny and Alan. Let him maybe look at it and make a recommendation. What did she ask?
Chair, I don't like motion approval request, any of the assessment of maintenance, which are the best model.
Second, okay.
Any discussion? Yeah, this was, when you guys made Freeze, is there any way we could split the deal with them or with the town? So fifty-fifty?
I think the, the deal with, with the town right now, they have some other projects which they're gonna have to invest their hard time finding and stuff for. Shoring up the, the water plant. Some properties and so. That one, that one. Okay, any further discussion? Okay. We have a motion before the board for the second. No further discussion, all in favor of sitting in front of the same eye? Any names? Also, I. Don't go too small. We don't wanna do this again.
I appreciate it, thanks so much.
Thanks, ma'am. Had to change the smile a while, that's good.
Next, under new business, some of the good stuff we did get to do with here on the board is a proclamation recognizing the National Teacher of the Year. Maybe that, I don't think this, maybe the district senate? We, we, we're gonna, we, we, and we're putting in a plug for you. What you gotta ask for? Mr. Smith?
Proclamation Teacher of the Year, Miss Dawn Poe, Region Seven. Whereas Miss Dawn Poe is modeling future citizens through guidance and education should be recognized for this dedication and commitment. And whereas Miss Dawn Poe, Poe is not only a third year teacher at Fairview Elementary School, but she has also been recognized as Region Seven Teacher of the Year. And whereas Miss Poe is cultivating social skills from teaching young learners about citizenship and compassion. And whereas the Teacher of the Year award is to honor educators that have made a difference in the lives of their students and promotes excellence in education. Therefore, we proclaim that the Grayson County Board Supervisor does hereby acknowledge Miss Dawn Poe as the Teacher of the Year for Region Seven and thanks her for her service to the citizens, students and citizens of Grayson County. Reclaim this thirteenth day of October twenty twenty-two in Grayson County.
He's up here, we'd like to get a photo with.
You may not wanna give all the love.
You're having a baby sale.
Channing can Photoshop the sound.
Your vice chair cheese. One, two, three, cheese. Thank you. Thanks so much.
I don't like the motion approval.
That need to be a little fun? My confirmation, okay. Okay, any discussion? All favors signify by same eye. Any pose? Also, I. Okay, thanks. Next, grant application, community preparedness.
Senator Board, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this. Another bit of good news that we've been working on for a while. Subsequently to the flooding in Freeze that caused significant damage to the middle school in twenty twenty on two different months, July and August. We started looking at several different possibilities for coming up with a solution to that flooding problem. And one of the solutions that we looked for was a grant process through the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Turned out we weren't qualified for that, because one of the prerequisites for their grant process was that we had to have a resiliency plan based on the flooding plan for the county. While we didn't qualify for the project to solve the flooding issue with the school, they did suggest that if we go ahead and put in for a grant application to build this resiliency plan, this flooding resiliency plan, that we would be better equipped of the next time that we go forth with a flood control issue or a grant request. So we did in April submit a request for an application for a resiliency plan. We got the letter on September thirtieth saying that we've been approved for this grant. It is a grant for seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the cost of that, that, that funding will be used for two things. One, it will pay for us to have the ability to hire a consultant to work with us to create a resiliency plan. So we can better prepare the county for flooding issues. And the second thing it does is it provides funding for our flood claim manager to become certified in that position. So we improve her ability and the county's ability as we move forward with other grant projects. So while this does not solve any of the specific problems we have, it makes us better prepared into the future for other grant opportunities through involving flood. We also requested to be considered for a no match and that was approved. So we will be able to accomplish these goals with, at no cost to the county, other than a few hours. Do you have any questions concerning the grant that I can answer?
It's more of a budget question. Do we have to, do we have to accept this funds and, and, and put it into the line item? Is there an action required by us for the budget?
Not yet, but it will be unanticipated. If we get the funds, it will be unanticipated revenue.
If we do, I thought.
This, this letter says that we were approved. It's a preliminary letter, there'll be a follow-on letter in, and they say the next several weeks that will give us the exact. It will basically tell us whether there's even been any changes based on the funding request. So we don't anticipate any changes, we think that this is gonna be pretty solid. But when we get that letter, which will also have the conditions for the grant, again, we will come to you again for the actual process to sign for the money.
Okay.
Do you have a question? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Next, on the, on the new business would be board funds.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as, as you all can see in your packet there, Elizabeth Lemon is going to be resigning from her appointment. On our alternate list, I guess, we can say we had a couple of applications that have been serving on this committee, but they're, they're non-voting members. And Mr. Johnson Ward is the next one in line to take a voting membership. He's a non-voting member at this time, but he was supposed to, he would like to be a for, uh, just Jonathan Ward wrote, uh, wrote an email requesting to go forthboard, but he's interested in being a voting member. So, uh, big pleasure for what y'all decided in there. As far as the next one, appointed Dick Keats to replace Renee Nestor. This is ASAP, the ASAP position, but Renee Nestor is currently filling. Now that Renee has moved on to the board, he's taking place, should be attached to her appointment to that. And then the last one there is Mr. Steve Clark, that moved out of state. He was a representative for town Freeze and someone that Renee put forward to end his term, which will be seven, nine, twenty-five.
We're coming up to the mayor's to file a placement to Mr. Clark.
Mr. Smith, the, the next one in line on the EDA, what district is he in?
Mr. Ward.
Since we're losing someone from Wilson District. We have, I know Darren Young was on that list, uh, as a non-voting member.
Yes.
What do you got next? Hours of board seats to do it. Jonathan Ward's application came in next and then Darren Young was after that, so that's why. That's why we, that's why we get you. Jonathan's really named the people that's out and that cases came in. Both are non-voting members, one is from Middle Creek, one is from Wilson. Wilson, there's a player. Let's, well, I mean, we lost a Wilson representative and I don't remember us saying that we appointed the EDA earlier this year, that it was a hard pass that we could have paced off when the applications came in.
Well, down, down, we put ten folks on there and then they were all approved when we came back and said, boy, we can't have this seven, is that? And so there was some contention about that. And there, I guess the resolution was that the folks would go on in order that their, their application, if they're, in order that they apply. And these two were the next two in line for that.
Is there any representation from the Wilson District on EDA? Uh, yes.
Gary Rasko.
Carrie Rasko.
Gary Rasko, I couldn't find him. Gary Rasko.
I know that Jonathan's been attending these, I assume Darren may have too.
They both attend great.
Pretty up to speed on what's going on with the EDA, but, you know, John, they were both on there first originally, and it was mentioned that we, it was going in order of the application. So I would like to see Jonathan go ahead and move up with, with the idea that Darren would be next.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the reason we were even thinking like that, that same position, if I remember, was Mr. Candidate at that time, and that's his application, I think, had kind of come in before Jonathan and before Darren, so that's how he got his position. So that's how we even got to thinking like it.
Correct.
Was because Todd, Todd Candidate's position, his application came in. Is he Elk Creek or where's Todd, Todd, is Elk Creek?
So as it, they, they weren't staggered at that point when we were discussing this earlier in the year. And they've since organized and they've staggered. So what is, is the vacant spot? What, is that a two-year term that she had left?
I think she was a one-year term. I can't say for sure, but I think Lisa said I would like a one-year term, which I can do.
So this would be the, to fill the one year?
I think I'm correct in saying that.
He just says one year on the chart.
So it would be finishing the term then?
It's one year.
So it'll be finishing two, in two months.
Is there a policy standard in appointments under, generally there, as districts, depending upon the board, will allow a representative for each district?
And the bylaws would state that.
Yeah, in the bylaws, is there a standard?
Yeah, bylaws, I think it's supposed to be at least one from each district representative, or that's what they try to maintain through the years.
Okay, and it is a criteria that met. So these additional three, you know, in four districts are just, you've got three of the, we've got four districts.
Yes.
Is there one represented?
One represented from every district as, as we speak, as at least one, two.
Who has two?
And I've just got one. Wilson's got one.
Wilson now has one.
Elk Creek's got, how many? Elk Creek?
Todd and Justine.
Yeah.
Jackson Ricketts, so they, it would have be two.
So.
Actually, actually, and then because the chairman is from Providence District, I think.
Chris Butler is from, yes, he is Providence.
Yeah, upper hand of the Providence District. So is there, if I'm wrong, represented from Providence District, correct?
Yes.
Matt doesn't work out on this.
Well, if you, if you think you need that representation, I'll go.
I, I'm not, I'm not going to get contentious with this. I mean, this, this term is over in April of next year, and we're going to be doing this again in April. And if we agree that, you know, when the applications arrive, then, but I'm not going to fight for six months.
Any more discussion?
And Linda's going to get, I think we got it by memory, but she's going to verify what you're just telling me. Chris Burton Butler is on a four-year term from Providence. Justine is on a two-year term from Elk Creek. Joe Killen is actually Providence. You remember that change? Two districts changed, so now.
He's on Cardinal Road.
Yeah, he's a Providence, Old Town was Old Town, but now he's Providence. And Elizabeth Hatch is Elk Creek, Elk Creek. And Gary Rasko is Wilson. So there's currently, and then Todd Candidate is Elk Creek. So there's actually three representatives from Elk Creek District at this point. And one from Will, Wilson, there was two, now there's three. And two from Providence, Old Town District is not represented.
Well, that's not my fault because it was really desperate.
Yeah.
And I thought Joe was still on us, and he was on us.
Joe, Joe's been on the EDA for a long time, and he was the Old Town Representative, but when the district lines changed, he became Providence. So now we actually do not have an Old Town Representative.
But aren't we stipulated to have one from each district? So he would, we would need to probably table this and let this develop, recruit someone? Or no?
My recollection is when we redid the EDA, Bill kind of reorganized them. We were focused more on capability than we were on location, and we were. And so it was, given what the mission of the EDA was and is, it was more about what, what do you bring into the table to help us solve our economic development challenges? And so I don't know, my, I don't believe that we have a necessary district apportionment, but it's not a bad thing. But I don't know that it's anywhere in the bylaws to say we got to have X number. It's always a good thing, but I don't think in EDA's cases required.
And we just, we just redid, with our reorganization, we redid our bylaws also. Steve approved them, and I just, at this point, I can't remember if that was, if district representatives were part of it. I know it was in the old bylaws, but I'm not sure about this. We're going to look it up.
What's the harm if we table it till next month, just to, be okay with that?
Yeah, I, I kind of, so he kept me, need somebody from Old Town in there.
Yeah, I could get in his yard and go walk him down. I'll be, I chose to get one to be on there, and he was on Old Town when we started, so don't do this on company.
He's been an Old Town Representative all these years since the district line changed.
Well, I think it's a good precedent if you do find somebody, so we can at least have one from each district. And I know there's three in my district, but I only, only one of those was my, was someone that I had made do with. Because there's the at-large, gets a representative too, I'm guessing, so. But that would, I think that would be good.
Just table it. Make a motion to table.
Okay. All right. So alcohol, alcohol safety program for Vicki would be the only appointment we would be voting on. So chair and anti-motion to appoint Ms. Keesling.
Mr. Chairman, we'll need to vote on the table.
Okay. We'll get the motion together.
It's, it's, it's a second, you know.
No, okay, you did, okay. All right. On favor, favor the EDA position. Reposed, also.
Make a motion to appoint Vicki Keesling to the ASAP team.
Okay. On favor, signify by saying no. Reposed, here now, also. Good. County administrators report.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, board members, board members. A few things here. Lindsay Young, the AG ED director, was nominated for the Twin County Chamber of Commerce Fifteen Under Forty Award, and was selected as a twenty-twenty-two recipient. Congratulations, Lindsay. So we're able to be at that ceremony, and we had three or four others from Grayson County, but Lindsay is one of our own. Public Works, tariffs from the river cleanup and all this, they haul roughly six to seven hundred pounds of trash from cleanup, costing two hundred and thirty-eight dollars to take to the landfill. I know it was a, a bad month for the river cleanup, we had a lot of rain that month and all, but it's still a successful cleanup. People were excited. I know I saw Mr. Andrews, and he was talking about the bags that they put, and he was real excited about how that had worked, and people would come by on boats and got the bags and were helping out, just volunteering to help out, and he was excited about that. October, the Press Cancer Awareness Month, so my partner here wearing pink, on Thursdays, we're supposed to wear pink on Tuesdays, we do purple for the domestic violence. Our lights out front of the courthouse, you'll remember your pink too if you go back for this. And Demi Sexton, Sexton is back with us. She's been hired as the 4H agent for Grayson County. She's worked with us one other time through, through the United Way with the program we had going there. And, but now she, she has come back from Pulaski County and is our fourth, new 4H agent, and we're glad to have Demi back. She's living for her house in Grayson County with some land. So if anyone knows five or 10 acres somewhere with, with a house, she wants to move back in Grayson County. And so we'll try to hip her out. Parks and Rec is holding open gym at Independence Middle School every Saturday from nine to twelve. And when you get that word out, they, they've been successful with people coming down and taking advantage of open gym, but we need to make that known. So more people to take advantage of it. I know we're working with Allison, and I got to find out more about this, but we're going to have an EMS survey, a childcare survey that we put out to our county residents. And this is certainly two of our critical areas that we, we need to help in Grayson County. And we'll improve, and we get better in. And so those surveys will be important as Allison develops those and puts them out through our Zen City. Public Meeting will be held at White Top Community Club on Tuesday, October the eighteenth at seven o'clock. And so this will be a chance for people to come out here about the Mount Rogers Project and make comments and input from, from the citizens there. Friends of Ag Breakfast will be held Thursday, October the twentieth at seven AM at the Gate Center. And you do not have to be a cattle farmer, a pig farmer, sheep farmer, you don't have to be any kind of farmer to be able to come to this breakfast and learn more about agriculture in Grayson County. So we invite people to come to this and learn more about what's going on in agriculture in Grayson County. Grayson County Parks and Rec will be holding a Halloween semi spooky event on Saturday, October the twenty-ninth, from five PM to nine PM at the Park Shelter. So if you've got small kids that would like to come get involved in some Halloween activity, there's your chance on October the twenty-ninth. The Public Forum will be held on Tuesday, November the first, twenty-twenty-second at Elk Creek Fire Department at seven PM regarding possibilities of multi-use facility. And we're invited to that, and we'll have a good crowd there to come and listen and give input on that project. On Monday, September, November the seventh through Sunday, November the thirteenth, the county will join in with NACO, the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers for Operation Green Lights for veterans by lighting the county building green. By shining their green light, we can let our veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. And we encourage businesses, community organizations, and citizens to light their buildings and home green in support of all our veterans. And we do appreciate our veterans. They mean a lot to us. We want to be here with the freedom that we have tonight if it weren't for our veterans, and appreciate all that they've done for us. That's all I have, be happy. Any questions?
Could you give us an update on the IT situation? How, how's, how are you?
Be glad to. IT situation, Mr. David sent me in here with us tonight, and he's smiling a little more these days along with Ernest with what we have going on. We have, David, you, you correct me, but I've been going down and getting updates, but we have a parallel system built now that we can test things rather than then plugging in wires and just hoping for the best, and then it takes a whole system down like we were having going on. This building, for the most part, is up and going now with phone service, internet access, AS400, all the admin system. I'm hearing no complaints now. Just this week, we got Antonina, a big witness, I think we got her squired away completely, and that was one of the last ones that needed to be squared away in this building. So we're good in this building. The Gate Center and the nineteen oh eight, we still have some phone service issues that they're built, working with the next porta gate that they have down there. And when they get that system completely up and going and get the antenna involved some way or another, I'm out of my league now, but when they do that, you should.
Would, would, would you like to speak, sir? I mean, you, you, you've covered all the high points.
Okay, yeah. If you would like to have.
That's fine, yeah. Curious to know too, like, the, the Rec Department and the other, you mentioned two other locations, where, where they're.
I called Rec Department just this week, just to see if they'd answer. I know their phone's working. Go ahead.
For things to speak to, Nick's just covered all the high points. We do have some equipment on order that will integrate very, very well with our firewall. Our firewall is industry standard. It is an absolute beast of protecting the things in this building along with other county networks, Public Works, Parks and Rec. Unfortunately, the supply chain issues mean we won't get some of that equipment in until maybe the end of the year. But as soon as it gets in, we will put it on our parallel network, we will test the configurations, and then we will deploy those configurations. For some of the questions that we had earlier about is the county network safe? Yes, it is. We continue to run that software, the NASA scanner, and we go up and down the networks, and we pull reports, and we have absolutely no indications that there's been any breaches of security during the times that it was down. There are no breaches of security now. And I can state that the citizens' data that is either transitory stored through the treasurer's office as they take payments, or the citizens' information that we have stored over at Larry Bolt's office in terms of real estate records, that stuff is still secure. We do check up on that, it's one of the primary things that we do. No one uses good news. The last thing that probably needs to be spoken to is the direction that we're going. The network was old, the network functioned, but our new IT director has brought in some new ideas, and they are moving forward towards resiliency in terms of getting multiple providers that will service the internet to and from this building here. We're also working towards integrating the sheriff's department tighter with our security posture, as well as keeping a better and tighter eye on their equipment out there. And the end goal is to have a remote processing site, AKA a disaster recovery site, that can either be our repository in case the building floods, burns down, terrorist attack, whatever. We will have exact copies, exact duplicates, long-term storage of every single bit of data, everybody's user files and folders and all the stuff on their desktop, that will be in a secure repository. That will take time, but we are putting the, the fundamentals in place so that we can have this building here, the courthouse, and all our remote locations, the sheriff's office, and our remote repository, our backup data center, whatever you want to call it, those will be in a triangle of equality, and all of those will have the same amount of security, they'll have the same amount of backup. And at times, if needed, we can shift our operations to that secondary backup disaster recovery site. And at times, if needed, we can shift our operations to that secondary backup disaster recovery site. That will be long-term, it will take some more money, but that is the absolute standard. Especially in times of turmoil, the Russians are doing this, you know, the Chinese are doing this, North Koreans are doing that, whatever. Security can never be a secondary concern. Just because we're a little county in the corner of Virginia does not mean people are not looking for us. We have the firewall data to prove it, but our firewall, like I said, is our primary source of defense. We're working it, and we're going to extract every little bit of data and every little bit of fortification that we can. We will bring those lines slowly, we will test, and we will try very, 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 very hard not to have any sort of network disruption. That's why we built that parallel network, and that's why the changes that we introduce go slowly. But they are being planned out, they are being budgeted for, and they are being implemented. But it takes time, it's never a process where you can say, hey, we're done, let's go home early. Never. There's always a new threat, there's always new technology, and we are working towards that. We are still a two-man shop, we could probably stand to be a four-man shop. We'll get there when we get there. But I can guarantee myself, as the technician and the I T director, who are working together hand in hand to make sure that all this Mickey Mouse is done. It was embarrassing, it caused a lot of problems, but we took it very, very personally. And we are ensuring that barring anything sort of a meteor, giant comet strike, whatever, that doesn't happen again. Or you have any questions?
Thanks, appreciate that. Good rundown.
Thank you for that opportunity. Yes, and he did it much better than I could, we got into details. But I would say in the years that I've been here, I know more about this I T department and language and all. In the last two months, I've learned more than I've learned since I've been here. And, and I can actually talk some language a little bit now with them. But it's, uh, through trial and error, but it's been good, uh, that to, to get back to where we need to be and, uh, have people working and not have problems. And, and I think our system, it all started with piece equipment that failed, and then we started trying to go from there. And, uh, I think Carl goes to church with Ernest, uh, and Ernest, uh, Carl said, well, even if I'd been there, that would have happened. Uh, so, uh, that made us feel better that, uh, it was a piece of equipment that failed. And, but we're on the road to getting a lot better now. Appreciate, uh, the board's interest in that, and, uh, glad for that, Dave. Any other questions on anything or any comments?
No question.
Thank you, all.
Next on the, uh, agenda, uh, informational items been provided to each of the board members in their pockets. So let's just move to registered speakers of comment, if we have any. It's Tracy Cummins. And Ruth.
Where are, um, Tracy Cummins' paddle mill room? Y'all know what that name is? Um, I just wanted to come thank you guys. Um, we have an idle bucket truck sitting in my brother's field right now, it's been there for a few days. So he didn't quite tell the whole truth, there is one idle. But I smile when I get up and see it sitting there because it is waiting for the power to be hooked up this afternoon. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're not there yet, though, we're getting there. Um, my, my brother's been very happy with his service. Um, I spoke with Jane Sexton in the grocery store today, she had written a letter a while back. She said she got hooked up Monday, but it was a little glitchy. So she's hoping that you all could still work, work out those bugs. But anyway, she was very impressed with you, and you Tom in particular, and, and I am as well. I did not expect to get the attention that I did, and I want to just thank you all so very much. However, I do not want you to stop here because I don't, did, did Brightfeed come on board? I've not heard a word. I was hoping tonight we were going to have a Zoom meeting with them. Um, uh, the Century Link, I told you, Mike, this is the, uh, Century Link, what is it? Government Agent Lady Dolores Carroll was her name, uh, reached out to me in an email and wanted me to call her. So I did, and she wanted to know what my problem was. Apparently, this, I, I don't know if, if the Steve guy from, uh, Brightfeed contacted her, I don't know what happened there, but she wanted to know what my issue was. So I did tell her, um, that basically our whole road, the most of our road was that, you know, bad line is what we had been told. And that it, it's still a problem. She never contacted me back, she told me she would get back with me, and she didn't. I was hoping to hear something tonight on that end. Do y'all know anything?
We're, we're, it's good, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Go ahead. Steve Brewer did call back and was going to do this meeting tonight, but he, he requested, and I got with the chairman of the board, and he requested to put it off until next month. Because he said we'll be in a better position to give you better information. By then, he will have his Virginia representative on board. Uh, they've already hired him, and he said he'll be with me. And, uh, he said we'll be in a much better position to give a better report and a better update. He said some of the things that I took notes on, I have, I'll be updating on some of those things. So you'll be, you'll be here next month, and we made that request, and I checked with the chairman of the board. And, uh, we told him that would be okay to do next month.
The switch has been made already, because I got, I, I have that with, that my mom's out.
Okay.
And, uh, so I got my bill, and it was, it said that on.
Okay, okay, I just, I had heard nothing, so I wasn't sure.
Come back next month.
Okay, I'll come back next month. Now, and, and I want to tell you all, the reason I keep coming back is not for me, you all have answered my concern. I have older neighbors that live on the road that I'm very concerned about. And I'm understanding that only people who can see the pole that they have placed on Mike's property will be able to get the gigabeam wireless. So they run it from my neighbor down the road, a pole, and then a pole to Mike, so they kind of bounce in the signal up the valley. But so far, how many people do you think that's really going to service? Do you know yet?
So we said.
Seven, okay, and that includes Jason Harris, I do believe. Um, okay, so that's helpful. Um, if, if someone would reach out to them, that would be great, because so far, we had filled out the information like the guys was, were telling us to do. We did all that, we got the thing in the mailbox, we filled it out, and then we get an email saying, we're sorry, we were mistaken, you're not going to get it, you know? I've got a story about several people like that. And also, one right off of Comer's Rock Road, um, right near the, the post office. And my cousin Beth works, she comes, it's like their summer house, she comes and works out of town. They told her she couldn't get it because it had to go underground. This is Chuck and Beth Ward. And they even offered to pay for it to run it underground, and they said no. So, but they could also see, uh, point lookout. So, anyway, uh, don't stop, don't stop, people still need the lean line, people still need the phone, um, but thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, because you, you highlighting this is, is a movement of all, I think this is, so keep, keep advocating for your neighbors.
Well, I'm writing letters and putting it in mailboxes, and they're not here because they go to bed at six o'clock, because they're, they're down.
Me too.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there, but no, we, uh, they are, I know people that I, I, I worked out, I really do, I worked, I love my neighbors, they're family, you know? So, yeah, I'm not going to stop.
Thanks, Chris.
Seeing no other, uh, anyone else that signed up for Public Comm here. Thanks to Board of Supervisors' time, and I will take this opportunity to mention, to be honest with you, for Virginia, that this board will hold two special call meetings. One October the twentieth and the second, one October the twenty-seventh, for personnel. And this will be pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven one one A one, uh, for, uh, consideration of application applicants for county administrator. And then, which moves us on to, uh, close, closed session. And, um, Attorney Motion to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one for discussion, uh, consideration of an applicant for county administrator. Um, specifically related to the October twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Make a motion.
Okay. Second, all party signify at the same time?
Uh, opposed.
Also up, okay, closed session.
We'll take a moment.
Drop there. Ma'am, that's, this young lady right here helped you a plea.
I know she did. She told me it was in the paper today, so I haven't read it yet.